...well attended, but we'd like to get that application in process as soon as possible. I'll be making that motion under new bid.
Okay, is there anything else council would like to discuss before we adjourn to caucus and move to the regular meeting? Okay, caucus is adjourned, I'd like to welcome everybody to Lordstown Village Council Meeting. Do you plan to stand and join me for the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance?
Our Father, in the water, heaven and heaven, will be thy king. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. In this state of our daily bread, and in the Lord's cross our paths. As we preach the gospel of his success. And believe in his name, the Lord is your ruler. For thine is the kingdom, power, and glory. Amen. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice in all.
First blank, could I roll call please? Mayor Hill, present. Mr. Vaughn.
Here.
Mr. Mansell, present. Mr. Radka, present. Mrs. Young.
Present.
Mr. Shealy.
Present.
Mr. Reader.
Present.
First blank, present. Mr. Frederick George Evans.
Here.
Mr. Paul Dutton, present. Lead Chief Rettinella.
Here.
Fire Chief Travis Keating.
Here.
Planning and zoning administrator, Dave Harrison.
Present.
Parks, grounds, and street commissioner, Dale Grimm.
Present.
Recreation, Marty Gibson.
Here.
Board of Public Affairs.
Here.
Land engineer, Frisk Adelman.
Present.
Okay, I want to entertain the motion for adoption of the agenda. So, move by Mansell, second.
Second.
Second by Jones. Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Entertained the motion for disposal of the amendments to the regular meeting held December 16th, 2013.
So moved, Mr. Radka.
Moved by Radka, second.
Second.
Second by Bonk. Reader?
Reader.
Reader? Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. We have no feeling with bills this evening. The mayor's report, uh, first thing on the list is the recycling gin issue. Uh, that is handled by the Board of Public Affairs. Their meeting is the 16th, a week from Thursday, at four o'clock in the afternoon, the same venue. Uh, people like to comment on it, you know, this is the current mayor of council or previous council, you know, we were not involved with that. So if you do have a question with the, uh, recycling, we do have some of the board members here this evening, if you'd like to talk to them later. I know that's kind of a hot button topic. Uh, later on, I will be asking council to remove a part-time dispatcher who has not got his hours in. Uh, every year, the first organizational meeting of the year, the mayor's required to give a State of the Village address. So, this year for 2013, our income tax collections for 2013 have met the projections clerk had made. Our east side sewers are finally complete and almost all customers are tied in. Baby was a good year, we paved almost eight miles of highway roads, village roads. Uh, we had a big project for drainage issues which were on Highland Avenue, and I believe we did get the drainage and flooding area taken care of on that. Village extended sidewalks on Salt Springs to Lydia Drive, getting residents off of Salt Springs Road for safety issues. Council modified the community reinvestment area agreement, adding more acreage for future businesses. This is another tool we have to be able to offer abatements if companies come in. We've modified our zoning codes to address the gas and oil exploration and expansion issues in the village. We brought income tax sharing agreements with the school up to date and created a paper trail in case future agreements are needed. We updated our Code Red Community Alert System to better serve our residents in the case of emergencies. We reached three-year employment agreements with the village employees. The fire department created a joint hazmat team with Weatherfield to respond to spills and other environmental disasters due to the county disbanding theirs. Police Department acquired three cruisers to replace two which had over 130,000 miles and one which had been rear-ended during a traffic stop. The road department purchased a new pickup truck with a plow and two new snowplow trucks. One, one thing to note, we kept our older trucks a lot longer than what we normally do, and we actually got better trade-in prices, so I don't know how that worked out, but it's just the way it did. Buildings received a new phone system replacing a 30-year-old system, and we were able to go modify our bills so we could have lower monthly operating costs with the phones. The old schoolhouse in Central Park got new hardy board siding due to the fact that we had a lot of deterioration and rotting and that wouldn't hold the paint. The village helped cosponsor the Scope Center at the school in conjunction with the school ward. This was needed in order to keep the center open due to changes in funding where they had required a match due to the fact that they only had so much money to go around, so they were asking for matching funds, and the village and the school district didn't match that. Scope participants have taken over the Salt Springs, Todd Avenue Flower Gardens at the Corners, and they've also landscaped the gazebo area to thank the village for helping fund their Scope Center, and we do appreciate that. They've done an excellent job. We purchased cameras for the village park for security concerns. We reached an agreement with Anthony and I sisters at the Shrine in North Jackson on Lipte Road to prevent sewer extensions to their facilities so they can expand. I believe they're going to be getting a daycare, uh, assisted living center there. Council's purchased a street clock which was installed, installed in Central Park. Metalco, a Canadian aluminum company, was granted a tax abatement package by village council to attract them to build a $92 million aluminum recycling facility in the Ohio Commerce Center. We are still in the running for this project, but no decision has been made. The state has also provided incentives to make our offer more attractive. The Ohio Commerce Center's had several companies looking to relocate field operations for the gas and oil businesses. We have been putting monies into debt service for the east side sewer project, so the fund can be made whole in less than five years. So having a 20-year note, we have enough money set aside, and we're hoping so in the next five years, so that way, future councils won't have to worry about that debt. Orwell Gas is planning to extend natural gas lines to unserviced streets in Lordstown, starting with Palmyra Road, and we hope they run more lines sooner than later because we still have approximately 400 residents who do not have natural gas service. We are still awaiting transfer of the old Kunkel Reserve Base at the north side of the Ohio Commerce Center. And that on top of a lot of the other usual activities we've had, including the village picnic, fun days, and concerts in the park, 2013 has been a very good year in the village. 2014, we will be continuing paving in the village, roads to be done using grant funds through the north end of Highland Avenue which hasn't been completed, and Palmyra Road from Bailey's Corners north to Hewitt Gifford. We're also anticipating the four-lane section of Bailey to be done the following year using some grant money. We're looking to extend sidewalks in the center of town, I budgeted $30,000 for that. Monies have been allocated to re-upgrade the village building and parking lot lighting to LED technology. There's an anticipated project payback from electrical savings of less than five years we can be made whole. Monies have been allocated to purchase a new tanker truck for the fire department to replace an 82 model which has seen better days. We should start looking at ways to finish constructing sewers in unsewered areas of Lordstown. We have approximately 30 to 40 residents who still don't have sewer. And I will be looking forward to working with this new council, should be another good year. That's it for the State of the Village Report. Uh, under new business, I will be asking for committee appointments, and I will also be asking for a couple executive sessions, one for property acquisition, and another one for personnel. That's it for the mayor's report. Is there a clerk's report this evening?
I have the same report that the solicitor will have that I would like to welcome, I'll be the councilman.
Okay.
No report.
No report for the clerk. Solicitor's report? No report. Any questions for the solicitor?
We rehearsed that, right?
Treasurer's report?
No report.
Any questions for George? Board of trustees, the public affairs report?
Yes, sir, I wanted to thank you for the prelude there. Uh, we have our meeting a week from Thursday for the BPA. If you have recycling questions or issues, please, please bring those to our meeting. I did have a handout up there, if you have time to take that as a reminder and answer the major question out there, so, uh, so please take that with you, and you can contact me after the meeting or later if you have further questions.
Any questions for Kevin?
Yes. Is there any way you could schedule an evening meeting for that, because I've heard people tell me it's hard to make the day during the evening.
Uh, yeah, we could look at changing, we have Allied Waste planned to be there at four, so let's start with them and see if we can make that later in the evening, and then we'll make it public if we can get it changed till later. Maybe more like council time, six o'clock or so would probably work better for people.
I think it would.
Okay.
Any other questions for the BPA? Okay, village engineers report?
Chris is over.
Any questions for Chris? Okay, special force, police chief Milhong.
I've submitted my monthly report for December along with my yearly report for 2013.
Any questions for you? Any questions for Brent? Okay, fire chief Eastham.
No report.
Okay, any questions for Travis? Planning and zoning administrator, director of economic development, Mr. Harrison.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I've submitted my monthly, annual, and just as late today, I submitted the turbine report, and would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Dave?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have a question, but I, I want to publicly thank David for the report that he gave. It was very lengthy, and it caught us up to date, and as, as coming on the council knew tonight, I really appreciate being caught up to date on the issues you're working on, and it was a very excellent report and gave us information that we needed. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Dave? Okay, parks, grounds, buildings, street superintendent, Grimm.
Uh, no report this evening, Mr. Mayor, but I also would like to welcome new members of council and forward to looking at it.
Okay, any questions for Dale? Okay, recreation, Marty.
No report.
Questions for Marty? Okay. Bill, do we have any correspondence this evening? No correspondence. Okay, public remarks, if you'd like to make a public remark, after I acknowledge you, if you raise your hand, please come to the microphone so you can get your name and address correctly recorded in the minutes. Public remarks. Kelly.
My name is Kelly Bornner, and I live at 7400 Highland Avenue, and I just wanted to take a brief few minutes and ask, um, the village, let them know what we've been doing at the school. Um, we have a situation where, um, there were three or four teachers that had applied to get a grant to upgrade our technology, our computer systems, with the new requirements for testing that they have. Um, I don't believe it's this year, but next year, they're going to have to do all of that testing on the computers, and, um, they have to upgrade them. And so they have a deficiency in the systems, and they're, we're trying to get a grant to have the funds to be able to upgrade that technology. Um, they passed the first level of that grant, and we're very excited, and then unfortunately, we're not successful during the second half of that, of that elimination process. So, um, myself and Ms. Reed, um, had gone to the Canfield Craft Show, it's something that they do every year. The seniors usually do it in Canfield. Um, they were in their 25th year as a matter of fact, having done that, and we spent quite a good portion of the day there, um, speaking with the people who set that up and some of the vendors, and we thought that it might be a very great idea for fundraising here for our school. Um, I know that you, that it's done at the apple cider time, so we did not want to, you know, overlap with that and step on anybody's toes in that regard, so we thought that perhaps if we could have a fundraiser in April, we're looking at, I believe it's April 5th, um, it's a Saturday, and maybe doing it from nine o'clock till, you know, nine o'clock in the morning till five at night, so that allows, you know, a vast majority of the community to become, you know, to come out in a large period of time for that entire day, um, to do a craft and maybe antique show to make it just a little bit different than, uh, what Canfield was doing. And in doing that, we would, um, there's many different ways that we can raise funds for the school. One of the ways that we wanted to do that was to sell the vendors the tables or the table space, um, so that then that money, we would like to earmark toward the technology upgrades that the school needs. Um, but that wasn't all that could be done. I mean, any other group could do, um, bake sales, uh, we saw that they had done Chinese auction there that looked to be very successful, uh, 50-50 raffle. It was quite the day at Canfield High School that day, so, and I understand that this is how they do it every year, and they raise a great deal of money doing that every year. So, we would, um, ask very kindly if the, um, village would be kind enough to allow us to, or donate to us some tables and chairs for that event, so that we could, um, have the vendors set up. We're hoping to have at least 100 vendors throughout the high school, and so, I mean, hopefully, we've talked, we've kicked around the number of $50 per table, so, I mean, if we can get 100 vendors, that would be $5,000, um, that we could put toward technology at the high school. Well, I guess throughout the entire school. So we would, we would ask very kindly if the, um, village might be willing to help, help us out a little bit and donate the, some tables and chairs.
Okay, I wouldn't have a problem with that, but Mr. Reader's going to be handling that committee, so I can give Mr. Reader your number later.
Yes, sir.
Kelly, and when he calls a committee meeting, they can discuss that in their committee.
Thank you so very much, I appreciate your time.
Okay, are there any other public remarks? Hearing none, we'll go on, are there any council remarks? Hearing none, we'll go on to committee reports, these are all new committees, so we probably won't be having too many reports. Finance, Mr. Mansell.
Yes, Mayor, the only thing I have is there's two pieces of legislation tonight from the finance committee, I'd like to see both of them passed. There's, uh, three pieces on here for the, from the negotiating committee that we would like to see passed, and then I've submitted a, uh, schedule for the, uh, 2014 finance committee meetings, and I think everybody's got the copy of that. That's all I have.
Any questions for John? Okay, parks, buildings, grounds, general improvements, streets and sidewalks, Mr. Reader, you've got a full plate.
Right, that's okay, but, uh, there is no report this evening, but we'll be more glad as soon as we call a meeting, which we intend to with Dale anyway, over the lights that you had mentioned about the LEDs, we'll be more willing to meet with you folks. That's all.
Okay, questions for Don? Public safety and welfare, Mr. Radka.
Uh, just one thing, Mr. Mayor, I'm still waiting to hear on the status of the two, um, sirens that we have not functioning. I've been in contact with Scott Dunn, and we have not got a definite answer out of him what is wrong with them, so as soon as we get to the bottom of it, I'll be reporting the status of them.
Okay, appreciate it. Any questions for Ron? Okay, public utilities, Mr. Vaughn.
Yeah, we have not had a meeting yet, we're going to be organizing, I'll announce a meeting schedule, and I have no reporting this time.
Any questions for Rob? Transportation, recreation, and senior services, Mrs. Jones.
Well, ditto on that, I have no report, but I, I will be asking for a motion to apply for this grant, and, um, as soon as we get a schedule set up for meetings, we'll probably have a meeting soon. Thank you.
Okay, any questions for Karen? Hearing none, Bill could add the first piece of legislation.
Negotiating committee for emergency passage, submitting restating orders number 16, 2012, establishing authorized strength, the hourly wages, and other terms of remuneration for the part-time dispatchers in the village of Lordstown effective retroactively to January 1st, 2014, and declaring an emergency.
Comments or motions on this piece of legislation?
Move to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules, they're second.
Second.
Second by Mansell. Roll call, please.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Radka?
Yes.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Six ayes, zero nays, motion carried to suspend the rules. Their motion to adopt? So moved by Mansell, second.
Second.
Second by Radka. Comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mr. Radka?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Six ayes, zero nays, motion carried to adopt, this is ordinance 1, 2014. Next, please.
Negotiating committee for emergency passage, an ordinance amending and restating orders number 34, 2012, establishing authorized strengths for the salaries and other terms of remuneration for the full-time administrative employees of the police department in the village of Lordstown effective retroactively to January 1st, 2014, and declaring an emergency.
Comments or motions on this piece of legislation?
Move to suspend.
Move to suspend the rules by Jones, second.
Second.
Second by Shealy. Roll call, please.
Mr. Mansell?
Abstain.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Radka?
Yes.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Five ayes, one abstention, motion carries to suspend the rules. Their motion to adopt? So moved. Moved by Vaughn, second by Radka. Comments? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mr. Radka?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Abstain.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Five ayes, one abstention, motion carries to adopt, this is ordinance 2, 2014. Next, please.
From negotiating committee for emergency passage, an ordinance amending and restating orders number 35, 2012, adopting and ratifying the collective bargaining agreement between the Lordstown Police Association and the village of Lordstown, Ohio, effective retroactively to January 1st, 2014, and pending December 31st, 2016, declaring a bargaining emergency.
Comments or motions on this piece of legislation?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Motion by Mansell, suspend the rules, they're second.
Second.
Second by Jones, roll call, please.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mr. Radka?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Six ayes, zero nays, motion carried to suspend the rules. Their motion to adopt?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Moved by Reader, second.
Second.
Second by Shealy. Comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mr. Radka?
Yes.
Six ayes, zero nays, motion carried to adopt, ordinance 3, 2014. Next, please.
From finance committee for emergency passage, an ordinance establishing the appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the village of Lordstown, state of Ohio, during the fiscal year pending December 31st, 2014, declaring an emergency.
Comments or motions on this piece of legislation?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Motion by Mansell to suspend the rules, they're second.
Second.
Second by Jones, roll call, please.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Radka?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Six ayes, zero nays, motion carried to suspend the rules. Their motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second by Radka, second by Vaughn. Comments? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Radka?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Six ayes, zero nays, motion carried to adopt, ordinance 4, 2014. Next, please.
Finance committee for emergency passage, an ordinance authorizing the cash transfer of interest earned in endowment funds into the sanitary fund, and declaring an emergency.
Comments or motions on this piece of legislation?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Motion by Radka to suspend the rules, they're second.
Second.
Second by Shealy. Roll call, please.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Radka?
Yes.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Six ayes, zero nays, motion carried to suspend the rules. Their motion to adopt?
So moved.
Moved by Jones, second.
Second.
Second, Mansell, comments? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mr. Radka?
Yes.
Six ayes, zero nays, motion carried to adopt, ordinance 5, 2014. Next, please.
From council's overhaul for emergency passage, an ordinance supplementing orders number 20, 2012, establishing the strength, hourly wages, and other terms of remuneration for all employees of the Board of Public Affairs of the village of Lordstown effective retroactively to January 1st, 2014, and declaring an emergency.
Comments or motions on this piece of legislation?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Motion by Mansell to suspend the rules, they're second.
Second.
Second by Shealy. Roll call, please.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mr. Radka?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Six ayes, zero nays, motion carried to suspend the rules. Their motion to adopt?
Yes.
So moved. Moved by Vaughn, second by Reader. Comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mr. Radka?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Six ayes, zero nays, motion carried to adopt, ordinance 6, 2014.